Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, November 19, 2018 at 5:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board and a joint meeting with the Library Board. I'd like to call the Village Board to order, please, and request roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Balig?
Yes, here.
Here, yeah, sorry, whoops.
Messed me up too.
All right, tell her not to call me first.
We need like two.
Boudreaux?
Here.
Staten?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Glish?
Here.
All present and accounted for. So, item three, Police Department items. Item A, Jim Myler is resigning from the Oregon Police Commission. Jim has served on the commission since 2015, and the village thanks him for his service. We appreciate the time he's put into that opportunity. And item B, discussion possible action regarding Axon Enterprise Incorporated in a quotation for body cameras. The recommended motion is accept Axon Enterprise Incorporated quotation for body cameras with the first year's amount of $8,622.
You'll make the motion. Second.
Thank you. Okay, Chief, you're on.
So, we, uh, three years ago, we bought Axon cameras, which are the on-officer cameras for the officers. And I was reviewing the video a few weeks ago, and I noticed there was a kind of a green line that went down through the video that looked like it was, something was wrong with it, obviously, and there was something playing in the background of it. So, I contacted their tech team, and they said that the DVRs in the cameras themselves were going bad. And I said, well, this is very disappointing, obviously, because we've only had these cameras for three years. And they said, actually, their expected life of the cameras is only three years. I said, well, that would have been nice to know when I purchased them originally, but, you know, like any electronics, they go out quick. Um, and so, I, after complaining to them about that, they said that they would actually upgrade us to the Axon II cameras, provide the docking stations and all the attachments for free. Um, so, the only thing that we would, they asked that we do is, uh, we pay a little bit more the first year, another $400, I think it is, and then it's slightly more, but they want us to re-up for another five years, uh, which covers two upgrades during that time. We would get another upgrade in two and a half years, and we would get another upgrade in five years. So, that's a total of over $12,000 in savings with the equipment, so. Otherwise, we've been very happy with it. They are top quality. Uh, we actually took out the cameras from our squads. We had another system in there that they were using before my arrival, and with the point-of-view cameras, we don't need that system, so it's only one system. Uh, so, I'd hope that you would approve this continued purchase of the cameras.
Jerry?
Yes, how do the officers like them?
Uh, they love them.
They love them, good.
Quite honestly, um, the number-one reason why I support them is they back the officers for what they do, and they love that.
I agree. Um, where are you planning to pay for this out of your budget, do you know yet?
Well, we've already got it budgeted in, and we'll just continue with that same budget process.
Thank you.
At a 414, Jerry, the capital equipment.
Capital equipment?
Yeah.
Another question for Thomas?
Yeah, um, when I was reading the information, I noticed that, I think, it came with new, like, cap mounts and all that, so will there be any additional equipment we need to purchase to fit these new cameras, or is it all?
Nope, it's all included.
Anything else? Okay, so we have the motion and second to accept Axon Enterprise Incorporated quotation for body cameras, first-year amount of $8,622. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, most curious.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item four is public appearances. Item A, hold off on that, tell her.
Yes, yeah, I think you're coming, I believe, yeah.
Okay. So, we'll go on to item B, discussion with Jason Tyce regarding new campus plan and tax agreement financing request and possible board direction authorizing village attorney to prepare the development agreement with Jason Tyce. So, village administrator's note, Jason recently discovered he is allowed to rent up to 49% of his current building and still being in compliance with the Small Business Administration loan. Jason's new and final idea is to rent half of his current building, retain the other half for Tyce's operations. This information provides him with more financial flexibility in building the new Tyce campus and may allow him to begin constructing his new building in the spring, summer of 2019. At Monday's board meeting, village attorney Drayney will review the summary of possible agreement document, and Jason will provide an overview of his new plans. Jason's also offered to provide a tour of his current building to interest the village's board members. So, Jason, welcome. Glad to see you here.
Yeah, thanks. Good to be back. Um, so, as it, as it said in the document, I think we're finally at a place of decision here in our building, which is good. Um, we, uh, took our building off the market, which we were trying to sell for quite a while, and we decided to rent, we're going to proceed with the idea of renting half of it out and keeping half for our warehouse, which would house two to four employees. Um, the, uh, the new building then would enable us to move the entire, our entire business under one roof except for the warehouse, which, which was the main, main goal all along. We didn't want to split the business in two, so, um, so, current, the current building, I'm not sure, do we, do we have plans to show on the slide?
Yep.
All right, perfect. So, the proposed, uh, square footage is 50,000 square feet for the warehouse and 26,000 square feet, two-story office. Currently, we have 88 employees, and as, it's tough to estimate, but how many will, when we, when we move June of 2020, but we're estimating around 100 employees on the moving date. And we have enough parking stalls in this plan for 140 employees. And then on the next slide, it shows what the potential is on this, this site. Um, we'd be able to potentially add on another 75,000 square feet plus an additional 13,000 office, um, on the site. So, that's the, that's the new plan and strategy, and we're, we're full steam ahead, hoping to start construction in the spring, summer with the goal of moving in summer of 2020.
Thank you. Do you want to hear Matt's presentation, and then take questions if both of you have questions right now?
Can I ask?
Yeah.
So, Jason, I'm, I'm new to the board. Can I, I, I just want to be honest, can, can you tell, tell me, and the, why should we support this proposal?
Why should you support this proposal?
Yeah, from you.
Um, well, I think, uh, the number-one reason is if, without Tiff assistance, the project doesn't happen. Um, I'd like to think that, you know, when we moved to Oregon with 13, 13 employees back in 2012, uh, to grow it to 80 employees and add on, uh, wants to our building, I think we've, I think we've done a pretty good job of living up to our end of bargain. And it's just, just the fact of where we are is in, in the business right now, it's, it's, if we're going to keep growing in Oregon, we're going to need the assistance.
Okay, thank you.
So, it, I mean, that's, that's part of it. I mean, there, there's also, uh, building in Oregon, I would say, there's, we don't know the specific cost yet, but there's going to be significant costs for raising the building and dealing with the low, uh, the low levels of the site and, which we had to deal with in our first edition, and we'll have to deal with it pretty significantly on a larger scale back there. So, that's, that's part of it, too. It's just going to cost more to build here in Oregon than somewhere else.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions right now? Jason, we'll have another chance, too, so. Matt, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, um, so, where we are tonight is in a place that's quite similar to the discussion or the summary that I've discussed with, uh, the board at, uh, at earlier meetings, that the difference is that, uh, Tyce has, has, uh, kind of addressed in a different way how to deal with the existing facility. That's been maybe the, the moving target, uh, here, is what to do with the existing facility. And the last time the board discussed this, there were kind of two different potential ways this might unfold, and we were going to try and build an agreement around those two different scenarios so that it could proceed under either option A or option B, depending how things turned out with the existing facility. And so, really, as I understand it today, the proposal is that the existing facility would be retained, not sold. There would be no, uh, uncertainty about what's happening with that existing facility. Um, and Tyce would lease half of it, uh, and continue to use half of it, so it would only need, it would, it would only need to build a new facility, uh, as described, uh, by Jason, uh, to handle the expansion. So, the proposal is now simpler in that sense. It doesn't have these two different scenarios that it's trying to manage. So, under the current proposal, um, Tyce would be obligated to purchase the existing site from Lycon at a cost of $800,000, um, construct a new, the summary in your packet says 80,000 square foot facility. I think that what we saw tonight was more like 76,000. We'll, we'll nail that number down in some way in an actual final agreement. Um, part of that being dedicated to office and the remainder to production. Um, and Tyce would be obligated to guarantee sufficient tax increment would be generated by this project to secure, um, the funding that the village is being asked to provide to support the project. So, those are Tyce's obligations. The village's obligations under this agreement are to provide Tiff funding to support the project, uh, up to a maximum of $850,000, equal to 10% of the project cost up to that maximum amount, which means that we'll have a, a, a look-back provision after the project is completed to determine what the final cost of the project was. Um, and, and then, well, that's when we'll do a final true-up as to the, as to the Tiff funding. Um, so, that's, um, that's it. Uh, it's pretty, it's a little simpler than what we've discussed at earlier meetings. $850,000 in Tiff funding from the village up to that amount. Um, and Tyce has to build the new facility and guarantee tax increments sufficient to cover the village's debt service on that borrowing.
So, what's the risk for the village?
Well, um, from a financial risk standpoint, if we do a good job with the agreement and we get appropriate security and a letter of credit to secure the Tiff guarantee obligation, the risk is very small. The risk would be that, um, the project doesn't generate the level of increment that's necessary, and somehow the letter of credit funding is, is unavailable and, for some reason. But it's, it's a, it's a manageable, it's a small and manageable risk. I suppose the way to think about, from a risk standpoint, um, the way this, we don't have a final agreement drafted yet, but the way it's likely to be structured is, um, project will be developed, we'll have an assessed value established, um, and we'll have, we'll, we'll have a letter of credit provided before that assessed value is established, and we'll be holding that. Once we get to the level of value that's guaranteed, that letter of credit will go away. And that's really where the risk comes in, because we'll have, we'll be making, uh, debt service payments for probably 20 years, uh, on this 850,000 that's borrowed. That letter of credit will go away after we get to this level of value that he's required, that Tyce is required to guarantee. And so, the risk is that sometime after that point, something changes, and the value goes down, and now we don't have the revenue stream that we were relying on. That is the risk you face anytime you've got a Tiff project like this. Now, the way we can hedge that risk is, what we'll probably end up doing here is, um, making sure that we get a little bit of cushion on value before that letter of credit goes all the way away. Those are some details that we'll have to talk about when we come back with a final development agreement. So, you know, what percent of value are you going to say you need to have in hand or on the books before that letter of credit goes down to zero will be one of the issues that we'll have to talk about. Uh, we haven't got into that level of detail in this summary yet, but will it be 100% of value, or will you say, no, we need 105% or 110%? But that, to me, is the risk with something like this. We can manage all the other risks. What we can't manage is we can't predict the future. We don't know if 10 years from now, something would happen to cause the assessed value of this building to be very different from what we, what we, what we start with.
Yeah, the, the state could change the way the assessed property, they've done that to us before, you just never know.
Yeah. Jason, any reaction to what Matt said, or questions?
No, we've talked through all that before.
Yeah, that's done.
I have no problem guaranteeing the tax, you know, the minimum tax increment if that changes.
Yeah.
I mean, we're in this together, so I, I have no, no problem with that at all. I think the, I mean, I agree with him on the, the risk part, but the spread from some of the preliminary numbers that we looked at for what the village would have to pay back in debt service versus what the property tax would be, I mean, there's a pretty good spread there, so it would have to go down pretty significantly, I think, in my opinion, so.
Okay. Questions or comments, Jeff?
So, um, will you need the rental income to cash flow your project?
No, well, we're moving into this project with, with, not even counting any rental income in our, in our budgeting and cash flow, that, that's in addition. So, we feel that's important just because we have no idea what tenants will find, if we can find a tenant, and how, um, viable it will be for long-term cash flow or, or rental income. So, we're going into this, um, looking at one, one entity without taking any rental, rental income. As far as the reason we reduced the building size down from the original size is to counteract that for budgeting reasons.
Jerry, any other questions?
Yes, yes. Jason, thank you very much for bringing, uh, a business to town with such potential for new jobs. Uh, the one thing that comes to my mind, though, is, I don't know if you've been allured to the fact that there's an election next April, and, well, for, calling Steve here. Steve will be leaving his post, and there'll be three new, possibly three new board members on staff, so I, I guess I'd caution you to secure this agreement before April, if you can.
What do you mean by security?
Well, the new board might not be as, look as favorable upon this as I think this board will.
Well, I'm looking to hopefully secure that tonight, I guess.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we're looking, I, I mean, part, part of the reason that we're looking to secure this agreement is so that we can go ahead and purchase the land. I don't want to purchase the land not having an agreement in place, because that could shake.
Okay, so, I misunderstand that. The schedule, at this point, looks like if the board authorizes staff to move forward tonight, we'll prepare an agreement and bring it back for approval, potentially during December. Oh, December, okay. Yeah. All right, well. Kind of hoping to have that back to you in December so you can make a decision next month. And again, I just, I just bring it up because I think you'd want to get that done ASAP.
Yeah, I mean, we, I, we, this has been a long process, and we're looking to move forward, hopefully.
Yes, I think we're all aware of that.
Right.
Yeah, but anyway, thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I have a question. Just a clarifying question, uh, when you were speaking previously, you said that it's going to cost more to build here in Oregon. Can you expand on that comment? I'm sorry, I've never built in Oregon, so I don't really.
So, if, basically, if you look at the wetland right there in between the two buildings, um, there, there's quite a, even, even though the land is outside of the wetland, there's still, the soil is still, um, not the best. Some of the, I, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, so I can't say it the proper way, but some of the clay layers are such to, to hold the foundation of the building. They've got to take out a bunch of that and bring in new fill, and then actually raise the building up a little bit so that if there ever was, like, flood maybe that they had in Middleton this year, so on and so forth, that you protect it, you get it up, because that's what we had to deal with, the building that we're on, too. Whereas if you're on a, maybe a more traditional site that's not so close to a wetland, you can, you, the soils and the under-layered materials are good enough to handle the foundation of that building.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. Um, this is more curiosity question, really, but, um, do you, have you looked at, like, runoff and stuff, we have, if you're taking away land that would normally be used for, at least in part, for drainage?
Yeah.
Um, are you taking any, uh, new designs into account or trying to, to build something that's ecologically friendly?
Yeah, so I think what's not on this plan yet is the civil engineering, and I think part of the state's code or village code or county code, I'm not sure, is we'll have to, all the land that we're displacing will have to have the appropriate stormwater, so there'll be ponds and stuff on there, so all the control, the runoff, so it stays contained on the, the lot. Just like in our building, we have a pond where all the runoff goes to, so it doesn't make it into the wetland. The DNR makes sure.
True.
Yeah, and we have stringent stormwater codes also. I think Mike Slavny said the most stringent in the county, right?
Well, used to be, but now the state.
Watered that town, so to speak.
Yeah. You can't be stricter than the state, but.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead.
I would just say, Jason, um, I'm, I'm really in favor of the, the proposal, and thank you for being in Oregon. And one thing that I've heard, um, from the community is that, uh, this would be the third time that we provide Tiff assistance to Tyce, and folks have asked me, why would you help the same business three times? And my answer is that, um, you've sort of reinvented your business three times, right? You're growing.
Yeah.
Um, and so, my, my answer to folks is that we want businesses in Oregon that are growing, that are successful, and, um, it's a great public-private partnership, in my opinion. So, just to, like, you know, that, that criticism will be out there, but.
Well, it's, I mean, the building that you guys helped us on the first, second time is still there, still generating tax revenue.
Right.
So, it's, it's kind of, to me, it's kind of like a good thing for the village, because it's going to be another piece of real estate that's generating tax revenue, and that's what we want. And so, our building isn't going away.
Right.
It's still there.
Well, thank you for continuing to grow and continuing to choose Oregon.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Other questions or comments? Yeah, a few minutes, minutes, go, Jason, you mentioned moving forward together, and I think we've done that since you started, and it, it has been a good partnership, I think, and models, Jenny was saying, a good private-public relationship, and, uh, you've increased your employees seven times, that's amazing.
It really is.
Yeah. You should be on WEDC and help them a little bit. Okay, so, we need a motion, Mike, to authorize village attorney to prepare the developer agreement, is that what you want?
Yes.
Okay.
So, move.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Six, one, so you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. So, Jenny, have you arrived? Is that you? Okay. I wasn't sure, I assumed that was the case, so. Now, if you want to come to the microphone, please, now I'll read the, the items. So, uh, we're still in the public appearances, item A, discussion with, uh, Mark and Jenny C. Fuentes, did I say that right?
Correct.
Okay. And possible direction by the village board regarding possible expansion of the Journey Above Childcare Center at 244 Jefferson Street. Uh, note that in 2011, the property was rezoned from single-family to planned development. So, can I go ahead and give some explanation, and we'll go see the state?
Okay, so, we're looking at a couple of scenarios, um, for an expansion. Based on the, the cost of building at this point, we kind of thought of a second scenario, um, that would be beneficial for us, so I will present that first. Um, that scenario is buying out the two properties going towards the village, to the railroad tracks, but not the large apartment building, um, and expanding and making a complex there with the, with three buildings. Um, that was our first, um, idea. We're still in the planning stages. I met with, um, Mr., your planned developer?
Jeff Ral.
Yes, I met with Jeff. And, uh, we talked about different scenarios as far as, like, creating parking in one of the three lots that would be parking for all three, um, and coming up with different ideas. So, we haven't gotten that far yet. We just wanted to kind of present what our ideas were here tonight, and then at a future date, we can, uh, have more detail for that. The other option is to purchase a property and build. We are looking at expanding to between 75 and 104 children based on our plans. Um, we would, there's a great need in this village for after-school care and infant care. So, um, with, with our expansion, if we build, we would, um, provide care with our blueprints that we have for 20 infants. Um, with the complex, the middle building, we were looking at making that more or less the infant toddler building. So, we would divide things up according to age. The current building, we would make schoolagers, and the furthest building would, we, we would make preschool, aged children. Uh, if we build a center, we would have infant through preschool in the new building, and then schoolagers in the existing building. That's what we're talking about doing. But there is a need. We receive calls almost weekly for infant care. It's really hard to find in this village. Most of the centers don't provide infant care. It is a tough regulatory system to have infants, but, um, if you have the right setup, it works. So, we just have to create that correct setup. And that's basically just presenting our ideas at this point.
Mike, do you think you want to say right now?
I think at this point, um, I would recommend that they, uh, come to this, a staff meeting, and then I think that, um, as they continue to, uh, you know, zero on their plans, and I would have a conceptual discussion in front of the plan commission.
Okay.
That's, that'd be my, the way I would step through it.
So, what you're looking for from us is kind of a nod of the head. It's okay to proceed.
I think, yeah, I think that they're looking for.
Is that what you need, Jenny?
That's exactly right.
If we have big reservations, somebody needs to speak.
Right, there's no point in spending money on, you know, blueprints and architects and things if, if, if it's, if you guys don't want to expand the expansion.
Did, when, when you were meeting with Jeff, did he, um, express any, um, issues or reactions, maybe, uh, the traffic on Jefferson Street? If you, if you bought the two other, and built the bigger complex, did he talk about traffic?
He, he said, we, he has not heard complaints, traffic complaints with our current building, so he didn't express. Um, he said, long-term future, if we did something out towards Bergamot area, it might be more beneficial for us, but then there's that cost of building a large center.
Yeah. I, when you went through the, you know, your process for this, that was one of the issues, was the traffic, and, and I, I could see the plan commission members, um, bringing it up if, if it gets that far.
Correct.
Parking, you know, just, uh, traffic in and out at the certain times of the day.
Correct.
Yeah.
Probably the morning would be.
Right.
The afternoon isn't so hectic.
Yeah.
Because people stagger.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So.
I think another, another challenge that we would have to overcome is, was your property was rezoned planned?
Mm-hmm.
But the two properties adjacent to you, are they still zone residential?
They are, and, and when I talked to Jeff, his comment was, it's kind of a natural, um, you know, if, if the board is in agreement, it's kind of a natural way to expand a village. Typically, he said, when, when small towns expand, they usually expand out, people will buy a house and make an insurance company, or make, you know, a clinic or whatever, and, and that's kind of how it happens through village expansion, so.
The, the commission could also have an issue. They've been very, very protective over the years of not having, um, the downtown commercial spread into the single-family, either, either North Main and South Main and even this way. So, you know, I think it's one thing, I think what Jeff's getting at, it's one thing of, of taking one house and making it into a daycare center.
Right.
But now, you know, building a complex, they could, they could have an issue with that, so I think a conceptual discussion with them would be a good idea at some point.
Yeah, I think so.
And the flip side of that is the commission's been trying to stimulate commercial growth out on West CC in the Bergamot area.
Correct.
So, this would be a plan that they'd be excited about in that area, but I get what you're saying about the cost.
Correct.
And this is something that I would definitely, um, be open to, to talking about. And this is something that I would definitely be open to talking about with regards to village participation, to try to make that affordable for you, because this is the kind of development that I think we're trying to encourage in the village.
Correct.
And specifically, I think it would fit in really well on the west side there by Bergamot.
It would, with the expansion of the town, the village growing, and with the need for childcare in certain age groups. There's a definite need.
So you're looking at the Bergamot property?
There are several properties up in that area that, you know, could be conducive to what we need.
Yeah.
We would need definitely enough property to create play areas that meet the regulation for state.
Yeah, okay.
Have you talked to them at all?
State?
Bergamot?
No, I have not talked to Bergamot. I have talked to my licenser.
Yeah.
So.
In one thought I had, that property's been available for a long, long time.
Which, which property?
The commercial property on CC.
The vacant ones in front of the townhomes along CC.
Oh, right, right. Correct.
And that seems like a really ideal place.
It would be ideal.
To do this, if you could get a good price on the property, maybe if it's been on long enough, they're willing to work with you, I don't know.
Exactly. When we were looking at the place next to the newly-built technology building.
Yeah.
That's Build the Suit, that was another option, as a possibility.
Yeah.
You got that playground right behind that?
Yeah.
Yes.
That open-air playground?
Right, exactly, that Liberty Park, yes.
Mulligans when the day gets long?
Well, I'm really excited that you are interested in doing this as a parent of two school-aged children and one in full-time daycare. I definitely can appreciate the difficulties in finding both spectrums of childcare, so I'm really excited that you're looking at expanding, and I'm looking forward to seeing your proposals come through.
Thank you, I'm, we're excited. We're actually, part of our plan is creating something very unique in the childcare world. I haven't kept it a secret, because I talked to my licenser about it, but I don't think everybody's going to jump at the same time, but we want to boutique the daycare. So for ages two, three, and four, we want to create Montessori classrooms, Reggio Emilia classrooms, and then my programming classroom, so people have choices, because really in Oregon, we don't have a Montessori school. We don't have different, so many different types of educational programs, so we would like to offer that in the town, too.
That sounds wonderful.
So Jen, if you were to stay at your current place, my only suggestion for you would be to engage your neighbors early on, let them know what you're doing.
Yes.
Even though, you know, you're zoned, but the rest of it, it just alleviates a lot of problems if they hear about something later, just engage them early.
Yes, I agree. We've, our neighbors have been very friendly to us, the ones that we talk to, and the man next door especially, because he has needs during the day, and we're usually right there available to help him out, so he's pretty happy, I think. Rich is gone, so he was a big headache, because he's very, he was very verbal about anything. And then the people across the street, we've had pretty good relations with anybody along that street there, so.
And then Jeff's talking about parking, because your clients or customers park in front of those houses on their side of the street, which is.
That's our staff, yes, they do.
Yeah, your staff, yeah.
Yes, our staff does.
So that's why you mentioned the parking, if you do this complex here.
Correct, correct. Yes, we'd have to create sufficient parking for all those needs.
It just goes much smoother if everybody knows what's going on.
I agree, I agree, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, good point, Randy, people find out, they're not always happy.
Surprise.
So are there other questions, comments? Yeah, I think there's a strong need to, I've heard this from people in our church that need care for their children, so, good for you for looking at it. So, what Jenny's looking for is, are there any significant concerns about this tonight? Obviously, there's a lot of things to be looked at yet, including the sites, but are we all okay at the present time with our proceeding?
I have, I think I have what I would consider to be significant concerns if you plan to expand in your current space, I just don't think it's going to work. And I think it's been a lot of time, that isn't, in the end of the day, isn't going to get you where you're trying to get to. So I'd say, to shorten the conversation, I'd recommend, like Mike said, going to the planning commission, talking to them, getting their feedback, talking about the two options, talking to staff, and maybe with a focus on Bergamot, and seeing how fast you can make that viable, and what would you need from us?
Correct.
If anything, to make that happen.
Okay. It would be the more ideal situation, but because of our, you know, high building costs right now, thanks to the tariffs, it just becomes, you know, a big question, do we do it or don't we?
Yeah.
Three years ago, it was, yes, we're going to do this, but, so, that's just our.
And I would probably echo Jeff's comments, too, with the caveat that I've been on the planning commission for a few years, and the folks serving that commission have turned down almost every proposal that's come forward to turn a residential building into a business near the downtown, to just give you a warning on that.
Yes.
That's what I see happening on that commission.
So what is the village's long-term outlook on expansion? Do they just want to go toward, down Main, or how, what is kind of the village plan as to what?
To cross fourteen, to go.
Oh, to cross fourteen?
To go, go east.
Towards.
And Jenny's right, I mean, the planning commissions, ever since I've been here, even before you got on the commission, there've been other attempts to do, like, I worked on a community before I came here where, along Main Street, they took a lot of the owner's homes and made them into real estate office, which is really.
Yeah, like Moncorb.
Yeah, it's very common.
And Verona did the same thing.
And our commission has said, nope, residential property is residential property, they've kind of drew a line around the downtown, so. So I think it'd be helpful, I'll drop you and Mark an email and have you come for, set up for a meeting.
Okay, that would be wonderful. Thank you, appreciate it.
Also, to the point of expanding, you mentioned expanding towards fourteen, if there's any areas over there that, since we are going to be expanding the business park, parents could be potentially looking for childcare on their way to work, if there's any places around there that might be good prospects.
Yep.
There's also a couple of subdivisions down there that.
Yep.
Might enjoy having that closer.
There was a property that just sold, I think that they're building on, I think it was where the restaurant was. And the guy that owned that, I contacted him, he wanted eight hundred thousand dollars for that property.
Oh, recreational concept.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I just said, no, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's, you know, that wasn't possible.
Just, here's what I was asking, if you were talking to Bergamot fiduciary, is that when Bergamot was getting developed, Slavney always, Mike, our planners always talked about, that's a great site in that commercial area for a daycare, he felt, with all the.
Residential around it.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Yeah, and I think.
Another subdivision being built across this area, yeah.
And with the boutique-ing, it kind of caters to those people, what they want, they can have.
Yep, yep.
So.
And I would say, in large measure, I agree with what Jeff and Jenny said also, the planning commission will help sort that out, I would personally like to see out in the commercial by Bergamot, I think that'd be a great location for it.
Especially long-term.
Preserves that residential area, too.
Correct.
I would, you know, I'm not the point, and I say stop, don't proceed with the residential part of it, but the planning commission will be sorting that out, too, so.
Right. I will get more detail together and re-present that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Anything else?
Good luck.
Okay, we're all set. Thanks, Jenny. Thanks, Mark. Okay, so you guessed six PM, you were way off.
And I apologize, I told the library board to arrive by five forty-five, so it'll be a little bit before they show up.
Okay, so we'll take it. Go ahead and do some things.
They're going to put their name, places up.
And please thank Jeff for putting a digital clock up there, because the arm sweepie thing was really confusing me, I had a really hard time figuring out what time it was half the time, so. Now that it's digital, I feel like I'm, like I'm on top of things again.
We're going to hold you to that, Jeff.
I will tell them, I will tell them.
That's a pretty bold statement, Jeff.
When I couldn't see Mickey's hand, I knew I was in trouble.
I mean, we hold them to the, all the trouble that happens at the high school.
We could still do other stuff on the agenda, though, right?
Yeah, we can go ahead and do some of that stuff.
Give Mike some practice jumping around them.
Yeah.
No, it's some reason it's not downloading, I'm not sure why.
Okay.
Good times.
So we'll go to item thirteen, which is approval of minutes from October eighth, 2018. It's our first 2019 budget meeting, a joint library meeting, so need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. But item fourteen, approval of vouchers, we have vouchers tonight, amount thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents.
I'll move approval, second.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
Well, Lisa's hiding all the good stuff.
I am.
Yeah.
I'm getting better at that.
Okay. So we have a motion, second, to approve vouchers, amount thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents, roll call, please.
Jacobson? Yes. Carpenter? Yes. Follig?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item fifteen is community input, is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to item sixteen, proclamations and announcements, item A, any board comments?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, thanks. Item B, staff comments, Mike?
So Jeff did talk to the fire chief, and you can see that they will not start before six PM, the burn in Motel, it's probably more likely you can be closer to six-thirty, so, we heard your concerns, and I don't think it was ever going to actually do it at five, I think they're going to gather at the station.
Yeah.
And get ready before they actually go out there, so.
Yeah, okay.
Did they take into consideration audience viewing area or any of the other stuff we talked about?
I didn't ask Jeff about that, I was, yeah, sorry, I was talking, I actually just asked him more about the time, and that's what he told me before he took off, so.
Okay.
Do you have upcoming meetings listed for us?
Before we do that, could I just talk about what I had in your, in your.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I know this is not on the agenda, I'm not asking for any board direction, I just want to tell you that we are, Peggy and I are going to contact our state legislators, you may have been reading about this, where they're trying to have an election, it'd be three elections in a row in the springtime, and I'm not going to get into the politics of why they're wanting to do that, but we are going to send emails to our legislators saying, please do not support this, or think about doing this in the lame duck session. I don't know if you've been reading about this or not, or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we ask questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
How much does it cost the village approximately to run an election?
That's a good question.
Rough, super rough estimate is good.
Well, there were, what, seventy-five people it took to run it, and those are paid volunteers.
For November?
Twenty thousand for November?
Don't you think, twenty, somewhere between twenty and twenty-five, that includes, you know, like, all the staff time prior to the election.
The trouble is that it isn't just the day.
Right. It's all the hard work ahead of time.
Candy still is recovering, you know, I mean, seriously, from the last election.
Yeah.
It's just, I don't want to wander into the politics, but this is a, this is a bad idea.
No, and I don't either, I'm just, three elections in the spring at, you know, twenty thousand dollars each one, and I realize maybe a fall one is more expensive, but still, that's pricey.
Just not.
There's so many things that need to be done in between each thing.
To get rid of.
Each election, that it's going to get confusing for us, and I think it's going to be confusing for all of the people voting. I mean, we could have double ballots, I mean, ballots for one election and sending out ballots for the other at the same time, which I don't think that's a good idea, but.
So Mike, I'm assuming that somebody's trying to get this approved before the new governor takes office?
Correct, yep, yep. And I think all of our legislators are Democrats, I mean, we're still going to say, please, don't support, I know they're not going to support it, but I'm going to make sure they don't. I think the league's asking us to do that as well, contact our legislators. So, we'll do that, assume, so the board do that.
So, you're going to send an email?
Yep.
To whom?
Our state legislators.
Okay.
To say, when this comes up, if it comes up in the lame duck session, please do not vote for it.
Well, I was wondering, we should have you draft a letter that the board would approve, that we'd send to Voss and Fitzgerald also?
Well, it may happen before the next meeting.
Well, that's what I was worried about.
And that's why, I know this is not on the agenda, so I'm careful about talking about, but I think we need to send it, like, before our next board meeting, which is December, I think they're going to come in the session before the third, I believe.
Okay.
If not, if not, then I'll put it on the agenda, and we'll do it that way.
Okay. Yeah, I think you're right, they'll have it done.
I think so.
As quickly as they can.
I believe so, yeah.
So, okay, go ahead with emails, and if there's time, then we'll have, Mike draft a letter, we'll approve it and send it out. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from, on staff comments?
Just the meetings, upcoming meetings, yeah.
Okay, any other staff have anything right now? Okay. So where do you want us to go now, Mike?
Um, well, we could, we could, just anyone's here from the library, we can keep moving ahead if you want, and do the sponsorship agreement?
Okay, so that will happen quickly?
Um, I think so.
Okay.
Seventeen minutes, probably.
How's that?
Probably.
Item seventeen, communication and miscellaneous business, item A, discussion possible action regarding the sponsorship agreement for J.C. Park West Innovation Project, and the recommended motion is to approve that agreement. So we need a motion, please?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
No, second for discussion.
Thank you.
I like the verbiage of the agreement, but none of the details are in there, if I'm reading it right.
So this is a, been prepared as a template?
Mm-hmm.
That could then be, where we could fill in the blanks with respect to specific sponsorship proposals, so this doesn't, we don't have a specific, this is just the template. We actually do have one that we've been working on.
Yes, right.
That does have the details filled in.
Yep, so, they will, they will, when we have agreements to be approved or signed by the village, they'll go through the village board and park board for approval.
So we're going to get another look at it when it's filled out?
Oh, you'll see.
We're just approving the template right now.
Hopefully you'll see a series of them.
You're just approving the template?
Yep.
Any individual sponsorship agreement, we'll have to come back. Any individual sponsorship agreement will have to come back?
Got it.
Yep.
And we're confident this template will work with whatever kind of sponsorship the, the sponsor's looking for?
Well, this one, this agreement was drafted in a way that is kind of tailored to the J C Park sponsorship kind of plan that's been put together. They have a very specific plan to go out into the community with in terms of sponsorship recognition opportunities. And so this particular agreement was drafted kind of based on that plan. So depending, you know, if, if there was a different kind of fundraising process underway with different sponsorship opportunities under review, we might have to make some changes to the, to the agreement.
I thought it looked good when I read it, for the most part.
Okay, so any questions or comments or... Okay, so we have a motion second to approve the sponsorship agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post motion curious. Thank you. Item B, discussion possible action regarding request to execute Dane County twenty-nineteen purchase of service agreement with the senior center. And the recommended motion is to approve that. So we need a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Rachel?
The numbers in this purchase of service agreement aren't anything new. They are all numbers that were plugged into the budget. We just actually now have this document in Dane County that we need to get signatures on. It's a grant we've received every year for many, many years. We are fortunate this year to be receiving about twenty-one thousand dollars more in grant money from Dane County than we did last year. So, um, just asking for approval to get this signed and back to the county.
Questions or comments? So we have the motion second to approve the Dane County twenty-nineteen purchase of service agreement for the senior center. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post motion curious. And I know Rachel said this, but a big thank you to the county for their support of senior center. Our county does a great job of doing this, and we can thank them and the leadership of Joe Friesey. So are you ready for library board, Mike?
It's up to you.
Jennifer? Do you have more coming? Do you know or you wanna wait?
We've got four. I'm hoping more will come, but it's up to you. We can keep moving on.
We'll keep going away. Just, just let me know, okay? When you're ready? Okay.
If we get through the agenda though, we're, we might not be here.
We'll give about five more minutes and we'll just move on.
Just let me know when.
I was trying to fit the agenda, so I apologize.
Okay, item C, discussion possible action regarding updated administrative service agreement. Village of Oregon, Oregon area fire EMS district, recommended motion is to approve that updated agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
This has not been updated for a while. This is the, this is the amount that we have in the village budget that the district will be paying us. You, you may be wondering why we're using twenty-eighteen rates, um, because that's what we're using. Because this is, again, this is the number we gave the district when we were preparing the budget. I've been talking to the fire chief that, um, I think at the joint meeting next summer, I'm gonna propose that we update this again. Because we actually are probably spending even more hours than this is capturing. But at, you know, at this point, this is what we gave the district for the budget, I think, you know. And, and the ironic thing is, you know, ironic thing is that we, we pay for the majority of this anyways, but it's, it's good accounting for us to keep track of it, build a district and then, you know, pay the invoice.
Yeah. Are there questions or comments?
Sitting on the fire EMS commissioner, I agree with Mike a hundred percent. I think that the more formal the relationship, the better it is for the village and, and the district as a whole. So thank you for taking the lead on that.
Thanks, Jeff. Anything else? So we have the motion second to approve the updated agreement with the Oregon area fire EMS district. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post motion curious. Item D, review of investments, building permits and impact fees. Any comments or questions here, anyone?
Just to make sure Jerry saw that.
Yeah, I know.
We have forty-one single county permits this year, so we're actually having a good year.
Right. I noticed that.
This will be good for the twenty-twenty-one budget, right Lisa?
Correct.
So this is like a total summary of all the accounts that the village of Oregon has for their budgets?
The first sheet is the, the investments.
Yep, yep. Right, yep, okay.
Looks like we're gonna...
And they're really, they're with all those different banks and the green bar on the side there? That's a lot of running around.
But actually, we're, Lisa and I were just talking about this last week, that now with our new bank, which hopefully that our banking agreement will be coming to the board probably in December, maybe, that I think when some of these CDs expire, we're gonna be moving it into the union bank and trust because of the great rate we're gonna be getting. So it's gonna make Lisa's job a little easier.
Good.
That's many accounts to manage.
Yeah.
So, and to Lisa's credit, um, she hasn't shied away from going where the rates were. So I, you've worked really hard to make sure that the return on the village's investment was right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You just let them know, you know, I, a lot of times I'll have, get a really good rate from a bank and then another bank will give me a not-so-good of a rate. And I'll say, well, I just got this from this bank. And if it's within Dane County, they usually will match it, so.
But we've gone to Waukesha County. We actually, we actually drove to Waukesha County one day and signed up for CD. But I think the good thing is, and I'm always harping about this, is just, you know, it's good to see our growth happening. And we get over forty building permits.
Yeah.
That is a great sign for us for budgeting.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, so we'll go to item E, discussion possible action, conducting the twenty-eighteen audit. Recommended motion, approve the engagement letter with village's auditor Johnson Block for conducting the two thousand and eighteen audit. The amount of nineteen thousand dollars for the general fund and nine thousand one hundred dollars for the water sewer fund. And the funding is in the twenty-nineteen budget.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
How do you feel about those prices, Lisa?
Well, this was part of the RFP yet. This is the third year of the rate that we were given from the RFP from Johnson Block, so.
So we're locked into it?
We are.
Any other questions or comments? So we have that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Item F?
Annual. It's a long, yeah.
Do, do we wanna do library board first? Cause...
It's a great segue.
Well, we're happy to get started if you guys wanna...
Sure.
Okay.
You can stop there.
Thanks for your patience.
No problem.
I just noticed that it involves the library.
So we're gonna take a short break here, right Mike, while you folks move and library board comes up here? Please, couple minutes?
Thank you.
So we're on... Okay, we are back live. I'd like to welcome the library board to this meeting, to this joint meeting with the Oregon village board and ask the chair of the library board, Jen Nelson, to proceed.
Um, can we, we wanna call the meeting to order? Can I have a motion? Or no, we need to do a call, right?
Yeah, roll call.
Roll call. Oh, y'all are gonna do it, sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, Goplin?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Bustler? Severson?
Here.
Santui Shuda? And is it Steida?
Steida.
Steida? All right, thank you.
The memorandum, do we need to go over it? I think we already signed it.
That's just in there for, in case there's questions about where we are in the process. I thought I just put the, this as reference.
So the first thing that we have is a discussion, um, with the Baker Street Consulting Group. And so we have Jim Radford and Jennifer Endersway is our director, so if you wanna kinda introduce it.
So, as you're aware, the library and the village partnered together to conduct a feasibility study. And so the entire contents of that report are in your packet. We wanted to make sure you have the same information that the library board had. We asked Jim to give a short presentation on that and he would be happy to answer any questions you have about the report when he's done sharing his kind of briefing on it. Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, they say that Thoreau used to greet old friends by saying, what's become clear to you since last we met? Well, I can tell you since last we met, it's back in, I think, early October or maybe September or August. I'm not sure the exact date. Uh, I've since interviewed sixty-seven people or had them participate in small group sessions in a feasibility study that was conducted. And you all have that report. And I must tell you, my firm has done well over a hundred feasibility studies. And I will say, this was one of the more positive ones that I think we've ever done. So, kudo to your community, I guess, for something that's probably not a surprise to you. But before I go any further, I'd like to just thank, first of all, the village board and library board for the confidence you placed in this process of conducting a feasibility study. Uh, feasibility studies are done as a prelude to campaigns, it's common practice in this country. And they're not meant to be perfect, but they are pretty accurate barometers of what can happen when we go to a broader audience than the ones that are involved in the actual study. So first of all, I wanted to thank the library board and the village board. Also, I'd like to thank thirteen people that were on our study committee. Some of you are here tonight. I especially wanna thank the friends who were very supportive of us, involved in a number of the interviews as well. But I really wanna thank them publicly for the service they've had over many decades, really, of service to the library and service to the community. So the friends were a big asset and really one of the critical things that we look for. And I'll come back to that later on. I wanna also thank the staff of the library who were all helpful, greeting people as they came in and pointing me in the right direction to the coffee pot and also where I was being interviewed, or interviewing people, I should say. Uh, the staff really received very, very high and favorable comments of the study. No surprise to anybody, I'm sure, but they're very, very capable staff. I also wanna thank the Firefly who hosted the, uh, site for a number of the interviews that I did and very thankful for that very lovely setting. Okay, so the study was done primarily to discern the answers to three main questions. I know you've all gotten a copy of the report, but I'll just wanna highlight a few things. The number one purpose of the feasibility study was to determine if it's feasible for the library to raise between three and five million dollar from Oregon and the surrounding service communities. Also, we wanted to determine not only what's the most feasible range, but maybe what's the most feasible and reasonable number. And so we will report specifically on that. The second thing we wanna look at is will residents and organizations, businesses, foundations, social and civic organizations in the service area welcome and support a campaign for the library and in this case also for the new library? And then thirdly, is it possible for the library to assemble the necessary ingredients for launching and completing a successful capital campaign program? So those were really the three main areas that we went into. Uh, our contract called for us to interview thirty-five people, thirty to thirty-five people. Uh, we ended up interviewing forty-nine people in forty-four separate interviews. I conducted every one of the interviews. We also had one person who really wanted to participate, but I had to do it by email, so that gave us one additional that way. During the early part of the study and in conjunction with the study committee, we decided to expand the pool of interviewees by organizing three small group sessions. Uh, we had another seventeen people participate in those. And it's a little different than the one-on-one interviews, but I always find them very, very helpful. I facilitated all three of those sessions. Now, one of the reasons why we exceeded our thirty to thirty-five contracted number was a lot of people were interested. And I thought, well, if we're here, let's just go forward. So that was really a nice development. Jennifer was very cooperative in identifying people on our study committee. Uh, so, uh, sixty-seven people participated in the study. I thought that was a great sample. Basically, we came back and I'm not gonna read my, my findings because I know we have a shortage of time. But we did come back with a conclusion that it is feasible to raise three to five million dollars for a capital campaign. And I'll tell you exactly what some of the mitigating factors were in that. But more specifically, we recommend a goal of four million for the capital campaign. Now, as we look at the numbers, we were testing really a ten to twelve million dollar project with the idea that the village might be putting up six million, poured that in. And so in the feasibility study, and by the way, I, I think I said this when I was here before, just because we do a study, we do not always move, or recommend moving forward in a campaign. So it is, as much as we can make it, an objective assessment of feasibility. And so these were the conclusions that we came to based upon all of these interviews and doing all of our homework. Uh, so we did recommend also that we think that there might be some other mitigating factors that would help ensure the four million dollars, but also might position us to move forward even to a higher number. Now, in all capital campaigns, there's a critical factor that's called positioning. And that's something we have to determine in the feasibility study. In other words, we might have the greatest idea in the world, but if it's not positioned properly, it's not gonna go anywhere. And so positioning is a very, very important factor. And so as I read these next five things, remember, these are things that might help us to raise the four million and maybe even exceed that to another number. And by the way, I just wanna say, there's no such thing as a scientific feasibility study. Uh, it's a, it's a subjective process. And this is one reason why I think the search committee or selection committee was very careful in selecting a firm. And I thought they did a very judicious job in doing that. I don't mean that to sound self-serving, but I think they contacted something like thirteen firms. So they were very studious in going through that process. So really what it boils down to is the quality of the interviews and the information that we get based upon our experience that we can make what we think are the most sound recommendations. But here's some things that we thought would help positioning the project for the greatest return. Uh, number one was conduct a well-organized awareness building initiative to demonstrate the value and relevance of the new modern library. What we found, not just here in Oregon, uh, we just completed a big campaign in St. Louis for the St. Louis Public Library. We ran into the same thing there. A lot of people just don't understand what a library is like today. They haven't been in it for many years since their kids were little. And so what we need to do is we need to let people know what a prize and a treasure a modern public library is. By the way, you might find it of interest, Andrew Carnegie started sixty-three libraries in Wisconsin, twenty-one of which are still operating over a hundred years later. So one of the questions that I asked in the interviews was, how many times in your lifetime do you get a chance to start a new library? So that's one thing. It's pretty important and pretty impressive. The first campaign I did in Stevens, in Stevens Point, when I moved here thirty years ago, was the Portage County Public Library and I'm happy to say, still operating very well today. Okay, thirty years later. So these are long-term projects, long-term investments. The next thing we found is recruit strong leadership to form a local volunteer team, making up the campaign steering committee and then a campaign committee. So as we go forward then, what we really wanna do, if you vote to go forward with the project, we really wanna get a number of people involved in making this, uh, this dream come true. And so we form a campaign steering committee, which becomes the executive group of the campaign itself. We need to do that and our feeling is you've got plenty of great volunteers in this area. It's a wonderful community. Uh, this is no surprise, I'm sure, but one of the critical factors that I look at as a consultant is what is the attitude of the people? How do they really feel about the project? Are they excited? Are they doing it grudgingly? Uh, is it one of ten other things they wanna do? And so I, I look at all of those things as I formulate my recommendations and go forward. But I feel that putting together a, a team would be very, very doable here. And I think we could have a lot of fun and really a lot of gratification getting a job done, job done right according to the standards of your community, which I think are very high. Uh, we also need to examine the possibility of multi uses of the library. In other words, is it gonna be a library building totally and exclusively? Or are there other things that we can do while you've got this very creative opportunity to build a new library and a new facility? And so it's not like renovating an old building. You've got a chance to build a brand-new library. And so a number of people offered in the interviews, well, let's at least give thought while we're at this juncture to what else can we do to advance the other needs of the community as, as we go forward with this project? Uh, the other thing is to refine the case for support. This comes up in every single capital project. Everybody always wants more details. You know, how big is it gonna be? Not only that, but you know, where are the windows gonna be? What color paint are they gonna put on the wall? So every single project is always given a little bit of a caveat that, yeah, but I need more details. So I think our vision statement that was included as appendix A in your report was adequate for the study purposes. And by the way, the interviews typically lasted about thirty-five, forty-five minutes. And when people came to those interviews, they had read the vision statement and they were prepared. Uh, so I, I was very impressed by that. So people came in and we got right down to the business and talked about the project. Uh, the last thing is to, that we need to do to position the project for, uh, for success is develop a deeper pool of potential leadership gifts. And my strategy recommendation is we seek to secure some early gifts during phase one of the, of the capital campaign. Now, many consulting firms do not consider the first phase of a campaign a fundraising phase. They typically look at that as the organization phase. We're just getting everything together. We're putting our case together, recruiting our volunteers, getting everything developed administratively. However, my firm, we learned a long time ago that we're open from, uh, for business from day one of a capital campaign, actually even from the study. And so we really wanna try to get some early leadership gifts to come into the, into the mix early on. I'd like to just stop there for just a second, Jennifer, if that's okay? Or do you want me to just continue on and take another five minutes and wrap it up?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, here are a couple of other things that you might like to note and I think are important. Uh, number one, the need for a new library was evident to everybody. So we didn't have to convince anybody. And by the way, that's not my job as a consultant. I'm there to interview people and gather information. But the idea of a new library was very much on everybody's mind. We didn't have to explain the details of why, when and all that sort of thing. It was pretty obvious. The other thing that was, I thought a major plus was the fact that the village leadership had put up six million dollars as a lead agent on the new vision becoming a reality. That was a major, major plus in the interviews. In other words, we weren't... In other words, we weren't starting from ground zero. And I know it's not necessarily guaranteed and, you know, cement necessarily, but the fact that all of that had been in the paper, there had been convivial discussions back and forth about the library and the plan. What I was perceiving from the interviewees was, we got a real team working on this project. Now what we need to do is take it to the broader community and develop them as part of our team. So that was a huge plus. There were a few concerns about the site, but most people were very pleased, frankly, with the site, I think, especially since it's in a downtown area and people would like to develop the downtown even further. I know you've got a lot of great plans about all of that. People seem to be pretty up on those plans, by the way. So in contrast to what some people say, I think people who actually do read the newspaper, okay? So I thought that that was kind of nifty that you're part of a greater development for the downtown area. And we worked throughout the entire Midwest as a consulting company. I can tell you, developing the downtown area of small-town America is on everybody's mind. And a library campaign like this to generate six plus maybe four, maybe even more dollars is a definite economic development project, unless not we've cited that. Because the hallmarks of a good campaign is there will be a meteor trail of other good things that will happen as a result of the campaign. And sometimes we find more money is actually generated after a campaign, but because of a campaign. And so you need to realize that as we go forward into a campaign, we're not just looking at the goal to build the library. We're also concerned about, are we able to sustain it? Are there possibilities for a future endowment? And so I just thought you'd like to know that consultants like my firm, when we look at a campaign, we have multiple goals that are financial, and one of which is what happens after the campaign. And so that's something I did want to mention to you. So the last few things, and I'll be finished with my official report. The reputation of the library is very, very solid, and that's something, that's the very first question that I ask in the interviews. How would you assess the overall reputation and image of the library? So what I found was the library has a great image, they do a great job, and what I heard as a little refrain was, in spite of what they got to work with. But in other words, everybody knows it's crowded, everybody knows it's noisy sometimes and so on and so forth. That's a sign of a vibrant library. But I do think that you should know that your library has a great reputation. The other thing that is important is we have good leadership already in place. Now normally, the way this starts off is the institutional leaders, namely the village board, which has one role in the campaign, so to speak, setting the background and getting the big things approved. And by the way, I pointed out the fact that the village has already secured the land, which some people were not aware of, that the village has already done that. So I use that as an opportunity to let them know how that happened. The other thing is the historic reputation of the library for attracting volunteers is very, very strong. So as we go forward then, it looks like we have the potential to put together the team, the tools, and the talent to carry forward with a capital campaign to raise four million dollars in light of the other plans that are already in place for the land and for the village financing. So overall, I would say that this was a very, very positive report. You may have caught in our report on page eleven, we actually score the questions that we ask in the interviews. And you can see we have a norm that we've established for our company, Baker Street Consulting. And that norm is not just ours, it's really the standard of the industry. And so where that comes from is firms like mine have learned, if you're going to go forward in a campaign, these are critical factors. You need to know where you stand as you're assessing your situation to go forward. So that's where our standards come from. And I might add also, by the way, I think they're pretty tough. Out of the thirteen questions that we ask, the score for the library surpassed or met all of our other questions, which is pretty unprecedented, I must tell you. The overall score for the library was ninety-five percent for its image and reputation, and that was way above our norm for that particular point. So these were all good signs. There's no guarantee in these campaigns. I can tell you, I've been through a lot of them over the years, but I think the makings of a good campaign for an excellent community, for a strikingly good purpose, that'll last for a long, long time and touch many, many, many lives over the years. And stop and think about, if Andrew Carnegie could have realized the impact of what he did with those libraries over a hundred years ago, I think it would be joyous for him to see what legacy he left. So with that in mind, I'll just kind of include my opening comments and formal remarks and try to field any questions you might have.
Okay, thanks. That was very thorough and interesting. So questions, library board, village board, go ahead.
So we've already, we were able to have this presentation at our board meeting last week.
You can pull that down.
I can pull it towards me. That's exciting. So we've already had a discussion with Jim. We had voted to try to go ahead with the four million dollar goal as a campaign. We're a little bit nervous about it. Just four million dollars in our community is a definite high lofty goal, but that's kind of what we had set as a campaign based on the remarks from Mr. Radford.
So the library board felt real positive about the report that you got?
We did.
Yeah, I didn't read it in our pack at all, so I was impressed. So questions over here, Jeff?
Did you take into consideration any national grants or grants outside of Oregon? Organizations that typically donate for projects like this?
I just had Jennifer a binder with about thirty different names of foundations, had their giving guidelines. That was not part of our contract, but we just did, we do it all the time anyway. So the direct answer is yes.
So would that be part of the four million that you anticipated?
Right, yes. Now, I didn't, I don't put that as our number-one source of revenue, but oh yeah. When you do a campaign, you really want to be as smart as you can be about generating this. So we aren't going to go out and just assume because of whatever old historic patterns are, we'll just follow the way everybody does it. You really need to be creative and so forth. Now, I will tell you that there are not a lot of foundations in this country. There's over fifty-five thousand foundations now that fund capital projects like this. They tend to fund program support. So what we might do as we get into the project further is, we might look another way since we would be on the campaign trail, to see if there's other ways we can generate money to the library and to Oregon that may not be campaign-related in and of itself. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. In other words, equipment and training and things of that nature. But yeah, we look at that as part of our goal. But I would say the four million, national foundations would be a smaller portion. But yeah, we want to do that now. When we talk about Dane County, that's a little different story because you have a number of very generous foundations right here in Dane County and also businesses. And you know, Madison is part of Dane County, right? Okay, so are we. And so we need to look at that because a lot of people who work and live and call Oregon home with pride, work in Madison for these companies, and many of them are national in scope. The other area we look at are, a lot of companies have matching gift programs, and so we want to look at that as another way of generating source of revenue. So the bottom line then, in response to your question, not only do we look at foundations, both local and national, but we also look at every other source that we can look at. So I would say the prongers of the funds are going to come primarily from individuals, businesses, the foundations that are within the Dane County region.
And then my last comment is just an adjunct to what you said about the Carnegie libraries. Stoughton actually has one of those Carnegie libraries. And if nobody's ever gone there, it's really interesting to read about what Dale Carnegie had to say. And there's a lot of history in that building, so thanks for bringing that forward.
Yeah, that's really, thank you. It's great.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have one question, Steve. Did you happen to see the memorandum of understanding that the village board and library board?
Yes, I did, actually.
What was your reaction to that?
I think it's great. I really do. I mean, it was clear and not too lawyer-y. I don't mean that as an offense.
Not too lawyer-y? That's because all these guys had a lot of work.
I like you even more now.
I got to tell you, and I don't want this to, I know it's probably being televised tonight, but when we worked in Oshkosh with the YMCA, the operating agreements between the youth soccer and hockey associations and the city, I mean, there were like thirteen different players, and it seemed to take forever just to get those operating agreements so that everybody, you know, said yes at the same time. But yeah, I thought it was pretty well done, actually.
Yeah, we had several meetings, a joint group of library board and village board and staff that did that. Matt, was that everyone?
Ten.
Was it ten?
Ten meetings.
Yeah. And Matt did a great job of leadership with it, so. And he makes things understandable also. Questions?
This is fantastic. I'm so excited with your conclusions and everything. And in the interest of so many people who just want to get this going, have you guys figured out, you had a nice list of the first things, the phase one, all the stuff to do, and have you guys worked out any sort of order that you would start to do those in? And, you know, like, how do you prioritize? Like, what's the next step? How do you get going?
Well, we, through our contract, number one. But no, the first thing you want to do in a campaign is now that we have all of this data, we need to create a plan. And you saw the report that we provided you was thirty-eight pages, so we tend to put together a plan that really eliminates a lot of the doubts. So in the plan, we would talk about our timetable activities. And by the way, also, we want to try to identify, when is the revenue going to come in, which is kind of a big, important thing. So the next thing we would do is, assuming everybody says, yep, let's go, and if we went Baker Street to be involved, the very first thing we do is we start looking at organizing a steering committee, who's going to be the executive group of the campaign, but we get going right away. And my suggestion to the steering committee and to the library board was, let's get going in November. I mean, for you, it's already the nineteenth, but for consultants, November, December are the best months because usually we're not now, you know, doing a lot of meetings and that's a quiet time. So I suggest we get going right away.
Okay.
So now you know.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, there is a lot of excitement around this project, and I think the interviews that you did caused a lot of that to happen also.
By the way, I was a paratroop in the Army. I made forty-two jumps, and I had goosebumps and a wobbly stomach every single time I jumped. So the fact you're leaping off into a four-million-dollar campaign is totally understandable. I have seen this on a number of occasions with other organizations that were at the same point where you are, and I think it's important to realize that one of the things that is assurance of your future success is the study. We just interviewed sixty-some-odd people and we got a lot of great data, and we didn't run into a lot of major headwind of, I mean, the economy comes up in every single study, so I take that as a given. But the fact that you've got a real clear deck ahead to take off from your flight deck, I think is really a good sign.
And I mean, just so you know, we have an RFP out for architects right now, so it is, in our own way, we're moving forward with some things. We should have those back, I think, Wednesday next week.
December catch. We'll talk about that later on.
Yeah, so there are things going on right now as well, so.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Item nine C, the preliminary scale of giving to raise four million dollars, a gift chart there that gives people kind of...
Yeah, that was just in your packet. The ones in the report were the kind of the three to the five, and so Jim provided this and we thought we just include it for transparency about what a campaign might look like if you're trying to raise that amount of money. And of course, you know, once you start receiving gifts, it's never going to fit this perfectly, but it kind of gives you a sense for what is required of the community to support that kind of effort. Do you have anything to add to that?
Well, when you look at the gift chart, bear in mind that the dollars could come from typically one of four sources. It's individuals, foundations, companies, and then organizations like the Rotary Club or the Knights of Columbus, the BFW, the Women's League and so forth. And when you look at those numbers, those are usually pledges, three years, sometimes five years. The pledge payment schedule, by the way, is not determined by me. It's determined by the steering committee, and they also are responsible for how we develop naming opportunities and how we recognize gifts. And so I just thought you might like to, by the way, the collection rate on pledges in this country on campaigns is in the high ninety percentile. So frankly, we don't even really consider much of an issue when we do campaigns.
Okay. Any questions on that scale of giving or comments? Okay, so then item D was a library buzz newsletter.
That's just informational. I guess I don't really share a lot of information about what's going at the library during board meetings, but just wanted to share, we do have a bimonthly library newsletter and that does a nice job of highlighting some of the more fun things that go on in the library and touch the community every day.
Yeah, that was well done.
I didn't put it together. I just shared it.
You didn't have to say that. No, whoever's responsible did a nice job. It stands out and I think kind of draws people into looking at it, so.
I will share that with them. Thank you.
Yeah. And then we have library board minutes from October tenth, 2018, and a special library board meeting October eighteenth, 2018.
And those are just informational or included because of the joint meeting here?
Any questions or comments on that, anyone? Okay. So that takes us to item ten. I will open the public hearing on amending section three point one-one of the Village Code of Ordinances relating to library impact fees. So Matt, we'll see how you can make this understandable now, like Jim said.
Yeah. Try not to be too lawyer-y. It's not easy, I can tell you.
Actually, Matt didn't do the report, did you, Matt?
No, but I think the report is pretty lawyer-y. But to try and keep it simple, so we are currently collecting impact fees based on a needs assessment that was done a number of years ago. And the purpose of this report is to create a factual basis to support considering increasing the current impact fee, using the same methodology that is in play for the current impact fee, but updating the, some of the cost, basically the cost of construction assumptions that were built into calculating the fee. Obviously, the cost of building has increased since the fee was established years ago. So this would basically just bump the impact fee up based on existing methodology to reflect the fact that it costs more to construct now than it did when the fee was originally established. At some future point in time, we'll have a more complicated discussion about library impact fees that is tied in with kind of a new methodology that will relate to the construction of a new library, but we're not at that discussion tonight. And so you have before you tonight and in your packet, the needs assessment that was prepared that would support, we believe, the ordinance that's also in the packet to increase the library impact fee. I don't remember what the number is, but Mike can help me on that.
It would go from four-twenty-two to eight-fifty-seven.
There you go. Four-twenty-two to eight-fifty-seven per dwelling unit. And with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
Well, just a statement, this makes complete sense to me, and I appreciate the time that you took to support the theory that it made sense.
Other comments or questions? So as far as the public hearing, are there any public comments from anyone in the audience? If you see none, we'll go to item C, library board comments. Anyone?
I mean, we appreciate you looking at it and we appreciate the idea of it, so, thank you.
Yeah, a lot of time was spent in MOU meetings talking about this and getting, you know, Matt brought in a partner to talk about it who specializes in it. So item D, village board comments. Had one from Jeff. Anybody else?
Looks good.
Okay. So item E, I will close the public hearing. And that takes us to item F, discussion of possible action by the village board on approving the library needs assessment. So we need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments here, anyone?
We have to prove the needs assessment before we prove the impact fee.
Okay, that's just the process we go through. Okay. Any questions on the needs assessment? Any comments from library board on the needs assessment, anyone? Okay, so with a motion, second, to approve the library needs assessment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thank you. Item G, discussion of possible action by the village board regarding ordinance number eighteen day seventeen, amending section three point one-one of the Village Code of Ordinances relating to library impact fees. So the first motion I'll ask for is a board by a two-thirds vote, the board members may suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings at tonight's meeting. So we need that motion, please?
I'll make it.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Don't get nervous when we say suspend the rules, it just, that's what the wording is, so it makes people wonder. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. So our second motion would be to consider adopting ordinance number eighteen day seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Most, motion carries. Takes us to item eleven, Review of Proposal, the RFP for Architectural Services for the Preliminary Design of the Library Building.
Okay, so you have the RFP, which is a request for proposals, in your packet. It is very much a result of a collaborative effort. We have lots of help from village staff, John Vino, library staff, Mike Grace, Jeff Rao, all working together, in addition to a sample that we borrowed from another community that graciously shared it with us. This is essentially step three of the MOU, so we're not trying to hire an architect for the entire process. What we're trying to do is engage an architect to start getting community feedback, to give us some ideas of what the library could look like on that site, both in terms of aesthetic, how it could fit the neighborhood, but also in terms of layout, you know, what might be included, also schedule and budget, because those right now are some kind of question marks we've had, and until we kind of get started on that process, they're kind of just estimates, and so we're hoping that the results of this process will give us some firmer budget numbers, which will help with our fundraising and make sure the amount we're trying to raise is really appropriate for what our needs are. If you look on page, page seven, but mostly on page eight, it talks about the scope of work and scope of services. So, on page eight is the scope of services. So, we're going to have them revisit the needs assessment, just to make sure that the work that was done before is still current, and just to kind of test some of the assumptions that were made at that time. They'll be doing conceptual design, a minimum of free options for the boards and the community to look at. Community engagement, we realize is a very important part of this process, to have a library that prioritizes what the community needs are. We want to make sure that we're using the dollars that are available the best we possibly can, and so this calls for a minimum of two public meetings to get community feedback on the process. Also asks for cost estimates and schedules, which again are kind of that fundamental piece of, you know, really being to the nitty-gritty of what the cost will be, and then how long it would take to come from the idea to actually reaching fruition. Renderings, which is more the aesthetic of showing what the exterior of the building could look like, are part of this as well, but of course, it'll be kind of a preliminary rendering, just so we can kind of narrow down the aesthetic that'll fit the neighborhood, and then whatever preferred design is selected will be refined later in a separate contract once we kind of are able to move forward, you know, in fitting with the MOU. We also want to make sure that we're planning for future expansions, that the library we're building today will be able to be one that will last for a long time into the future, and so we're asking them to take that account even at this stage when they're coming, you know, with recommendations about how we should proceed. And then, based on all the feedback that comes through this design process, and we're asking for kind of a final preliminary conceptual design that we would use as kind of the foundation for fundraising and just moving forward and getting more refined feedback as we kind of do the fundraising process in tandem. The request for proposals from architects are due December fifth, which is two, just over two more weeks. We did have a site visit, which was optional for interested firms to come out and take a look at the property that the library will be on, as well as the current facility, and we had a good attendance at that, so there was significant interest at the visit. Whether or not those firms will actually submit a proposal, we're not sure, but we had many qualified firms with library and municipal building experience show up for that, which was a good indication that it's a, you know, we're headed in the right direction. We did have a few comments from firms about the proposals, just the site in general, some of the history, so we did respond to those questions for those firms, and hopefully we'll be getting some proposals turned in shortly. But, per the MOU, any contract we would do with an architect would require both Library Board and Village Board approval, as stated in the MOU, so I just want to make sure you know that you will have a say in that. The Library Board will be reviewing the proposals they get, and hope to identify three to five of those firms to interview, which we hope to do in early January, and then hope to be able to have a recommendation for the Library Board and Village Board to approve a contract in the early New Year.
So, I've never been a part of anything this dynamic, and I'm interested, when it comes to these kinds of decisions that require both Village Board and Library Board approval, how many different breakdowns are there? For example, Village Board approves, but it's not unanimous. Library Board says nay, but it's not unanimous. So, is that a nay? Is that a yay with a caveat? You know, as opposed to Village Board, it's pretty clear-cut, right? We either have a majority or we don't.
So, anytime approval of both bodies is required, you're going to need a majority vote on both bodies, you know, to approve something.
Okay.
So, each body votes independently?
Right.
And the approval is determined independently?
So, you just keep coming back at it until you get a majority vote one way or the other?
Yep. You've got to get to a point where both parties, both bodies are able to agree.
Okay.
I will say, the way this process is designed, the Library Board is doing most of the work, and is really has the first, so really, they're going to be driving the ship, as I see it, and coming to you with something presumably they are already prepared to support. I don't think they're going to ask you to approve something they don't want to approve. So, they'd be here saying, "We would like to proceed with this architect. We like, we've approved this, and now you're being asked to take a look at it as well and say yes or no."
So, in my world, being on the board, it reminds me a lot of the relationship that I have with commissions.
Similar.
Where, like, I'm not likely to want to push something forward if the planning commission said they're not interested, and by the same token, I really want to know that the planning commission's interested enough to bring it to me to ask me.
It's a similar dynamic. The, all the legwork's going to be done by the Library Board, and they'll be coming to you with things they've already approved and are going to ask you to approve as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, keep in mind, Jeannie is on the Library Board, so she'll be at those meetings also, and then Jenna and Amanda will be in some of the leadership that's going forward too, they volunteered the last time, so.
Thank you.
We'll know what's going on.
Thanks to Oregon for doing that.
Should be pretty smooth, I would anticipate.
Hope so.
That's planned.
That's the plan.
I really appreciate that question, though, because it's better to ask it now than it is, you know, to get it to a point later on, but we will be having Attorney Dragney review, you know, the contract that we have with architects, and so we'll be trying to, you know, do that, those things proactively as well, moving forward, so thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, the, well, the purpose of MOU is to smooth things out, so there's agreement ahead of time on both sides on how we're going forward, and I think that's working quite well, and we'll continue to do so. It's a good, a good MOU, I think.
That's, one thing I really appreciate about Oregon is how peacefully we're able to work through the challenges that are in front of us, and I've been part of other communities where that's not the case, and then you end up with warring factions, and some of that stuff runs as deep as the community is old. So, I'm really grateful that I live in Oregon where we don't have that. We come to the table and we work things out, and we move forward together, sometimes agreeing to disagree, but we move forward together.
Yeah. Thanks, Jeff. I've said a lot of times, the time I've been on the board, that I think it's a great place to be an elected official, because people are supportive and they, for the most part, respond respectfully when they ask questions and stuff, so it's been good.
I just want to comment, too, that's one of the reasons we focus so heavily on community engagement in this proposal, is because we want those ideas and concerns and suggestions to come forth in the design process, so we can think about them holistically, incorporate whatever makes sense, prioritize according to that, so that there hopefully won't be any surprises, that those voices are heard before we get too far down the road in that process.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else on the RFP for Architectural Services from either the Library Board or the Village Board? Any comments, whatever? So, Jenny, it's back to you for item twelve.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks again. This is, item F is for Discussion Possible Action on Reallocating Funding from the Closing of the Tax Increment District, number two. Mr. Grace will explain the details.
With Lisa's help. Yeah. So, we basically, we were going to take, we took money out of the general fund balance to do the land contract, to buy the property we were just talking about for the, for the library, and as, because we didn't know if it was all going to come together, and the Library Board, it was going to, we were going to do the MOU, and everything was going to work out, and then, and when we did, the Library Board provided us with a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars of impact fees, which was part of the MOU process. So, we didn't, we didn't need to take TIF two money to pay that sixty thousand dollars back that we took out of the fund balance, because we received impact fees from the library. So, what Lisa and I are proposing is to take that TIF two money of sixty thousand dollars and put that in TIF four capital improvements fund. I'm, I'm sorry, is that, or I'm going, going into the Business Park, sorry, Business Park Fund. We're trying to make sure that going into nineteen, we had, there's money to be both in TIF four and in the Southeast Business Park to pay for the new planner's time in there, but also consulting work.
So, if I made a motion to reallocate sixty thousand dollars that was taken from TID two to TID four, would that be appropriate?
The, the motion would be approved, reallocation of funding from the closing of TIF two to TIF four capital improvement fund, sixty thousand dollars, and to the Southeast Business Park, thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. That would be the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah. Thank you.
This is just bookkeeping.
Yep. Well, we, we want to make, it's, it's, it helps the general fund balance, because we, it's been paid back, and, and this will now try to ensure that in some of the special funds, we don't have deficit spending next year.
Yes.
Please tell me a second, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we need a second, to Jeff's motion.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
Couple of questions. When we, the budget we just passed for the planner in twenty nineteen, for the hiring of the planner in twenty nineteen, that wasn't taken into account this, these dollars, was it?
We, we anticipated that we were going to be doing this, so we, we, so that, so this is, this is, this is an eight, this is actually an eighteen budget amendment, so this is actually helping the nineteen budget.
Right.
Yep.
But in the nineteen budget that we just passed, so when we passed that nineteen budget, you were expecting that we would pass this as well to pay for the...
We put part of it in, yeah? Actually, we have it somewhere there.
I think...
Quick question, Jeff. I meant to look it up before I came to the meeting. I know, I know we did, we made one motion, we put some money into the, I think we put sixty thousand dollars into the TIF four before, because that's why we, in eighteen, I know that we did that, but probably the budget amendment. Let me see here. Well, take me a second.
Don't worry. Four-twenty-six.
No, four-twenty-six is the...
Southeast Business Park.
Four-twenty-six. No, that's two. See. So, maybe we did, yeah, actually, I think, what's TIF four?
It's four-thirty-one.
Four-thirty-one?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think we did a TIF four. Transfer, I think we did that in TIF four.
Yeah, I think I can, I have done the journal, I tried to sort of talk about it, but this is...
So, we, we did. When you, so when you, when you, if you look at, and they don't have it in front of you, but when you look at your budget for eighteen projected actual in TIF four capital projects, it shows transferred other funds of eighty-three thousand dollars, and in that eighty-three thousand dollars is this business transfer. So, we were accounting for this already in the nineteen, when we gave you the nineteen budget, we were anticipating doing this budget transfer.
It wasn't part of the actual yet, we put it in as part of our projection.
Right.
Our projected budget for eighteen. Because there's different columns when we're, we're working on the budgets. No, I'm, I'm, I guess where I'm stuck is that, so, I feel like it would have been great to have known this when we passed the budget, because it, it would have been, it just would have been helpful information that this was something you were planning on doing, but wasn't made clear at that time. That's where I'm kind of coming from.
Yeah, no, I, no, we should have, we actually didn't think of this until last week, when we realized that we needed to reallocate the TIF two money, because we, we received the impact fees from the library. So, when, so when we were able to get the impact fees from the library, we were able to then use that money to pay off the sixty thousand dollars that we advanced from the general fund.
Right.
Versus using TID two.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm wish beyond the wise.
Yeah.
It's more of the, like, I don't understand why we're doing this after we passed the budget, because it feels like, it feels like we passed the budget with this being planned for, but we should have known it before we passed the budget.
I agree. No, it's, it's our mistake. We should, we should have done it, either before or during the budget process. Yep, I agree.
Oh, you said you just thought of it last week, right?
Well, it'd be good, we...
Well, we thought of it in be, kind of in between, like, when we had the preliminary budget approved, and then when we were working on this, and, because I think it was just like last week or the week before, it was like right before we had the public hearing, where like, there was just something really unusual going on with that sixty thousand dollars, so then I looked into it closer, and we had doubled up, putting the sixty thousand dollars...
That's right. That's right.
Into the...
The general fund.
We had doubled up the sixty thousand dollars that we had allocated to buy the property. We had allocated sixty thousand from the general fund, and then sixty thousand from TIF two. So, we just kind of found this like a couple of weeks ago, that, that had been doubled up. And the reason that we had done the sixty thousand from TIF two is because we didn't know for sure where the library was going to go, so we couldn't guarantee impact fees were going to pay that back. So, that's why we used the TIF two money. And now that the impact fees are paying it back, that's why we have the sixty thousand dollars that we then allocated to TIF number four.
I agree, you're saying, if we should have, if we didn't know, thought of this sooner, we would have told you that even before you adopted the budget. I agree.
Yeah, well, and when we adopted the budget last week, you know, I gave you all the changes that were done, but I only did it for the two thousand nineteen budget. This is a two thousand eighteen budget adjustment. So, I guess I didn't really think about giving out the adjustment for eighteen, because there's going to be more budget amendments coming for two thousand eighteen yet, too.
We have, we have to do the large one that Lisa does, which trues up all the public work, salaries, and wages, and things like that.
At the end of the year. Yeah. So, I guess I was in two thousand nineteen mode, not thinking of the adjustments we made in eighteen, that one listing sheet that I gave you last week. That was just all things we did for two thousand nineteen for our adopted budget. Yeah. So, but the, these dollars that are being transferred in eighteen are going to fund something that's happening in nineteen. Kind of, I... Potentially.
Yeah.
Actually, I think it's more to cover the deficit that's in there right now.
Yeah.
It's not really going to cover any future expenses, it's going to cover the deficit that's in that fund right now.
There's, there's two, the money's going into, there's money going into the TIF four capital projects, and then it's the Southeast Business Park. I think the Southeast Business Park actually is going to fund, we may, we may pull some fund balance out for the nineteen, but it depends how much time the planner spends there in the, in the park.
One thing that was new to me, and I don't know if this will help you, Jenna, but there are, there's buckets that we budgeted, for example, in the Fire EMS Commission, there's budget, there's buckets that we budgeted for, but the spending doesn't always true up to the, to the buckets. So, come this time of the year, we might find that we've underspent in one bucket, overspent in another bucket, and there's a way for us to move that money so that the overall budget lands, and that's really important before the audit, because otherwise, it's an audit finding, and those aren't good things to have. The auditor would prefer that you go through the process of truing up than to show them that you've got overspending and underspending in specific silos.
That's good. I just actually went back and read the audit internal control memo today for some reason, and, and that's one of the things they brought to our attention, that we need to be doing more budget transfers. And that's a good point you're making. This is actually an eighteen budget versus the nineteen, but, you know, if we would have thought of it sooner, we, I'm sure, we would have mentioned it to you during the budget process, that we're, we're putting money into these, these two funds to try to eliminate a deficit in one particularly, but also to try to maybe provide some funding for the Business Park in nineteen. But Lisa's right, there'll be additional budget transfers coming up, yeah, December.
So, so then the last line where it says, "As the village begins to focus on the development of the Southeast Business Park in twenty nineteen, we want to make sure the fund has adequate resources to cover the staff planner's time and consulting work next year." But you're putting money in there to cover a deficit so that it's at zero when we start to hire the planner next year?
The deficit's more, the deficit's more in the TIF four capital improvement than the Southeast Business Park.
Yeah, I think the Southeast Business Park was pretty much at zero at the end of last year, and there hasn't been any activity this year, so I think, I don't have the resolution in front of me, because that would show me what went on.
So can you flesh out that statement a little bit more for me? Then, the last sentence where it says we're getting, making sure that there's adequate resources for the twenty nineteen staff planner's time, if we're filling the deficit?
Yep, so in, yep, so in this, in, if the planner ends up, so, so I don't remember that sheet that was in the nineteen budget, where, we've actually in there, let's see here, now this matter. We have, the planner's being charged to, I think, ten or twelve funds.
Yeah.
And so if the planner really spends a lot of time on the park next year, he or she, we, we may actually come back and do a, another budget amendment and move money from other, other funds to cover time in the Southeast Business Park. So all we're doing is trying to possibly cover if the, if the person spends more time in, in the, in that fund next year, that we have enough money in there in nineteen. And then actually, we, like I said, we may true that up next year, possibly, was, you know, we're, we put together that, those, that estimate where that person's gonna spend their time, until we really get the person here and have a couple of years of experience, we're gonna, we're sort of...
We're doing our best guess to figure out.
These are, we're guessing, but that's what it is.
It's our, your two best guesstimate is what a budget is, of what's gonna happen in the next year, and this is what we think is gonna happen. It may not happen based on what the board approves or doesn't approve. So if we don't do Southeast Business Park next year, then the planner's time will be spent elsewhere.
And, and actually, if we would've just taken a, a loan out for the land contract, we wouldn't be having this conversation, because we never would've used the TID money.
Right.
We, we were just taking, but we didn't want it, we decided rather than, because it would, I don't know if you remember how influx the whole thing was, we, we, we were gonna buy the property from the group that was selling us the church property. So we had, we had to do a land contract at the end of sixteen for sixty thousand dollars to hold the land, because we, we didn't want to buy the land outright, because there was still a lot of like, well, is that where the library's gonna go, and then we had this, you know, that's right, ten, ten meetings of the MOU. I mean, it was a long process. So we could've just gone and taken a loan out, but we found that over the years, if our fund balance allows it, it's better to borrow from our general fund than actually taking a loan out. And, and, because then it, because then when the, when TID two closed, we would've just moved the money into these special funds, we probably wouldn't be doing this budget transfer, to be honest with you.
When, TID two is the one that when we closed, we put, we, or we left it open an additional year, just for the affordable housing fund.
Yep, yep.
But then there was additional funds prior to that last year that is allocated out to all the taxing jurisdictions. So in two thousand...
Including house...
Right, and we're one of them. So in two thousand seventeen, we paid back about ninety percent to the other taxing jurisdictions, including ourselves, so this was allocating out those funds. So there's gonna be actually a little bit more to allocate out through the audit process at the end of the year, when we actually close it and we zero the account totally out. Because we have to still pay the other taxing jurisdiction, the remaining portion that was left. And it was in the audit, it was in one of the audit pages for last year.
So we'll, we'll have even more, well, hopefully, more money to put, probably most likely, we're, we're looking at a deficit next year in some, one of these special funds, well, that's probably where we'll put the TID two money, but we'll come to the board and they'll have to do a budget transfer or amendment.
Just a question, then, the money that's going into the Southeast Business Park Fund, for the sake of argument, let's say we didn't spend it all next year, like the planner's time didn't use it all, does that money roll over to the next year, or does it have to stay in TID four?
Yep, goes into fund balance.
It rolls in, it rolls into the fund balance.
And that's okay to accumulate?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So I know the general fund has to be zero, right? I mean, so you don't, this isn't one of the buckets that are, you know, that you have to zero out, is that...
So, so, so that, some reason the planner, yeah, right, the planner doesn't spend that much time in there, and that money would just go in back into the fund balance then?
Okay.
And use it in, yeah, future years.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions on this item? Jenna, you okay?
Good enough.
Okay.
Good questions.
Okay, so the motion is second to approve reallocation of funding from the closing of TID two to the TID four capital improvement fund and to the Southeast Business Park Fund. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, thank you. Item seventeen G, discussion possible, action, change of agent, and quick trip number seven thirty-one. Direct matter of motion is to approve the change of agent Peggy S. Packard at quick trip seven thirty-one, and Chief Ewell has approved Peggy Packard as a satisfactory agent. So need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have one question, sorry. It's apparently my question time. I thought we had changed the way we were gonna put things in the packet to alleviate the chief mate saying yea or nay on things, but I didn't know if this was in there like this, because it was a change of agent versus an operator license, but I wanted to just ask about that.
It's a change, it's completely different than an operator.
Yep.
That was it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item one, report of committees, item A, or I'm sorry, item eighteen, no, I go back to one. Planning Commission, November fifteen, two thousand eighteen meeting, trustee carpenter, please.
This is discussion of possible action regarding a conditional use permit application submitted on behalf of First Presbyterian Church of Oregon, Wisconsin. Property owner for a group development under section seventeen point two-two-zero, the zoning ordinance, for the First Presbyterian Church facility located at four zero eight North Bergamot Boulevard to enable the use of the activity rooms, north X, and worship space for music and art education programming and performances by the Not-for-Profit Academy of Sound. So I would make a motion that we approve the CUP agreement.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a few questions on this. What, what are the requirements to have a conditional use permit where, where the church is? Is it based on square footage or percentage used, or what type of business it is, or what's the...
Yeah, so here's, here's what I can tell you. The property is zoned institutional. Church, using this lot as a church is allowable as a permitted use in the institutional district. Using, a nonprofit using the property for the kind of mission that this organization has is also deemed a permitted use, or perhaps a conditional use in this district. And the other thing that's going on here now is you have two separate organizations operating in the same building, which is called a group development under the zoning code. So there are two independent reasons why this particular proposed use requires conditional use approval. One is the group development, two different businesses in the same building, and then the other is the, this particular type of nonprofit organization use in an institutional district. So that's the reason they are required to get conditional use approval. Let me stop there and see if there are any questions so far, and then if not, I'll keep going.
Well, yes, but I'd rather have you finish what you're gonna say.
So, and we've had some discussion at the staff level about these group development conditional use approvals, and really what is the, what are the issues that tend to be significant? And at least your planning consultant, Mike Slavney, as I understand his perspective on it, really the main reason that, that is, that group developments like this require conditional use approval as a policy matter is so that you can evaluate the parking. Because with the church, when the church was approved, and it has whatever, you know, parking is there on the site, the determination was made, that's adequate parking for that use. When you add this additional user into the facility, the question is, is there still adequate parking, I guess? And that, that struck me as like, as a practical matter, that's the...
And that was a question Mike brought up at the commission meeting.
Yeah, that's the main issue that is kind of, as a practical matter, in play with a group development. The other issue then is, is there anything about this particular use of Academy of Sound in an institutional district at this location that would raise any issue under the standards in our ordinance in term, and I don't have them in front of me, but our standards really relate to the potential for adverse impacts on neighboring properties. I never heard, I, I didn't, nothing was brought to my attention during any of our staff meetings about that being a concern. So really, I think the issue here, at least as I understood it, as a practical matter boiled down to, I mean, the reason for the conditional use approval was required is because group development, two users plus this kind of use on this site, both require conditional approval, conditional use approval. But the practical issue that was kind of in play, as I understand it, was parking.
And, and the fact that we caught this because we had a meeting with the church on a different matter, and when we discovered that actually they're already using the church, we said you need a CUP. So the fact that they already been using it and there have been any issues, I, I, there's really not a problem, as far as parking and use of the church property.
Well, and the, I think one of the conditions of the conditional use permit is they're not allowed to have, to be operating during Sunday service, when there's peak parking on site. Other than that, I think they can operate at any, any other time. So that's kind of the background, as I understand it.
So I guess my main question, so, so the square footage being used, that's not an issue, what about the five oh one C three status? Like, if the Academy of Sound is for-profit, would that change anything?
Interestingly enough, and I don't know why the code makes this distinction, but yes, it would not be, if this was a for-profit operation, it would not be allowable as a conditional use in this zoning district. I don't know why that distinction is there, but it is.
Okay, well, that just made my job a lot harder. That's not what I wanted to hear, but, because I like the Academy of Sound, full disclosure, my son takes lessons there, and Erin Chusman is a friend of mine. But I talked to her about this, she couldn't be here tonight, she's very busy doing things, and while the part, the, the Academy of Sound is made up of two parts, there's the five oh one C three, which is the nonprofit, which raises money for scholarships and stuff, but the, the part of the academy, and now, and they, they do use the office space there, but the, the rest of it is, it's technically for-profit, even though they operate as a nonprofit, because she is, it's an LLC, and she's the sole owner, and she pays herself, you know, out of that, but then she reinvests everything back into the organization. And, you know, it's admirable teaching kids playing music, but, but the LLC is the one that, you know, uses all those spaces that are outlined in the CUP, because that's where they actually teach the lessons, which is the for-profit part of Academy of Sound.
Yeah, so if in fact it's a for-profit operation, to the extent that it is, it doesn't meet what our code describes as the kind of organization that can operate, I, again, I don't know why this distinction is there in the code, and so if that really is a concern, then I guess...
But we weren't told that, so...
We weren't told that.
Well, it wasn't asked the planning commission either, because Erin was all set to talk about this, and, and nobody asked her. Nobody said anything. She doesn't know who prepared the documents, nobody asked her from the church, like, there was not a lot of communication, I guess.
So I, I'm not sure where the fa, the information about its nonprofit status came from, I mean, that was in Mike Slavney's report, I don't know where he got that.
I thought she said that at her staff meeting.
I guess, I guess that was our, some, that was our understanding, and it might've been a lack of communication, a lack of clear communication. So if, if this in fact is, so here's a suggestion, if there's a concern about this issue and we need to sort it out, my suggestion is table it, and we figure it out. And again, I don't really understand, I mean, the code is what it is, so maybe if there's not a good reason to distinguish between for-profit and nonprofit, we might end up back here with a code amendment to say, who cares if it's for-profit or nonprofit? It's not different, it's not a different use, in my mind.
My, my concern in bringing this up is not to, to hurt the Academy of Sound, obviously, because I, I think it's a good location there, and no one's really complaining, and it shouldn't be a thing, but if we approved this as it is, it would set a precedent of allowing a for-profit entity to operate in a church. And do we want to do that?
Well, again, it's a, it's an institutional zoning district, and so I guess the policy issue is, why would we care, as a matter of policy, whether an operation like that is for-profit or not-profit? What possible difference could it make from, as a, from a land use standpoint? I don't know.
The only thing I can think of is, is from a property tax exempt perspective. You know, so if the church is leasing out more than fifty percent of the square footage or more than fifty percent of the use, do we want to consider it nonprofit or for-profit from the perspective of property taxes?
Yeah, and, but that's not, that's not a zoning issue.
That's the only thought I can think of.
Yeah, and so I have to say, you know, zoning codes are all, they're such complicated animals, and probably someone had a thought in mind as to why they drafted, you know, the institutional zoning language the way it is, and they said, you know, nonprofit is okay. The truth is, when I was looking at this, I read, initially I said, oh, this isn't even allowed in this district, because it doesn't fit, and then the response was, oh, actually it does if it's a nonprofit. Oh, it's a nonprofit, so yes, it does. Now we're hearing, maybe that's not the case, so...
Obviously, Mike picked that up at that meeting, because you, you know...
So, if that is your, if, if, if your information is, there may be an, a for-profit component to this that would cause an eligibility issue, I think I would recommend that you, that the board table it, we figure that out, and then we develop a plan to deal with it. Again, I don't think there's any concern about this use at this location, and so my guess is, if this really is a for-profit, we'll probably ask the board, do you want us to develop an amendment to the code so that this could be approved? And then we can come through with that, and you can approve that, and approve this, and you're done.
That would, that would take some time, because they'll have to go through planning and do a hearing and...
But in the meantime, no one's, no one's pursuing an enforcement action.
Right, but again, the issue isn't so much the Academy of Sound, it's the precedent it would set, because another music school might try to open in a church, and they would be for-profit, and maybe they don't have a, a nonprofit component to them.
Well, we just don't want to be violating our own laws.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Well, that too.
We just have to clean up the ordinances to make this work, right?
Sounds like it.
So, sorry, Academy of Sound people.
Well, this'll slow things down, but again, until, until such time as the board decides how it ultimately wants to handle this, no one's going to say you can't operate any longer, no one's taking enforcement action.
Right.
So it's not gonna have any practical effect. That means this'll take some more time, there'll be some uncertainty associated with that. I think the issue is, we've got to come back and ask the board ultimately, with benefit maybe Mike's help, why do we, do we care whether it's nonprofit or for-profit in this zoning district? Does it matter? To, in my mind, if it, if it walks like a duck, then who cares if it's a for-profit or a nonprofit duck?
Yeah.
Well, I...
I agree.
And it may not matter.
But maybe there's something I'm missing.
For zoning, I guess not, but you know, Jeff makes a good...
I'm trying to not be loyally.
He's trying to keep it simple for us, so we understand. Okay, so we, I would suggest a motion to table.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Okay, so we'll table that and investigate, and then we'll come back to us, so, okay. Item nineteen, it's not requiring action, there are none before us.